Alright, we're going to get started. It's 6:30. This is our regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Bonnaroo, Texas. Held today, Thursday, November 21st at 6:30. Here in Commissioner's Chambers in Municipal Building. All order and determine if a former is present.
Commissioner Raymond P. Tom.
Here.
Commissioner Sebastian Martinez.
Here.
Mayor K. Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Y. Paul.
Great. Please rise to the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for having us together again for our meeting in the City of Bonnaroo, Texas. Help us make good decisions. Bless everyone that is here, protect them on their way home. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. President. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, do we have any citizens we heard of? Number one, you can see. We have the approval of minutes. We have packets. You might like to make a motion regarding these minutes.
We don't have anything to make a motion about. We approve minutes. Consent agenda.
Motion has been made to approve the consent agenda. Item is in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Number two, approval of financial update. Overall, it's only a month. Contract sewing, so I sewed some of these, divided them by 12. Contract sewing's a little under where it would be on a monthly basis. Fines and fees are about 8,000 below what they would be on a monthly basis. Obviously, it's not consistent. Have we started placing the budget? Our general sales tax, though, is about $1,400 more than what it would be on an average monthly basis. Lineberger hasn't started collecting. However, we don't see that. The sponsorships and fundraisers were all of our fundraising dollars, do you remember?
Yeah, I don't think I remember.
Our expenses, the city events, is $10,523. Is that all related to Halloween festival?
Uh, some of it's Halloween.
Okay, Halloween, Halloween. But then we have our fundraising dollars that we raised. Just want to see.
It's like 74, 7600 dollars we raised.
What was the net, I'm just curious, the net?
So, I guess.
That includes the Halloween festival, but we are under budget on the festival. So, we raised mostly.
We did. We raised more than half a million.
It's not simple, man, like 70%.
Yeah.
All in all, I found on monthly, on an average basis, obviously, our expenses and our revenues aren't consistent, but we are under what is a little monthly?
Well, the salaries are higher, the salaries are higher because it included three pay periods. Because it was a long month.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the financial update from October?
I'd like to motion to approve the financial update.
Okay. Motion is made in second to approve the financial update. All those, is there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number three, discuss, consider, and take possible action on the occupancy and development code in all matters related there to. The item we had in our workshop, we hit it pretty hard, I think we got pretty detailed, there's a lot of stuff in here I like, there's some stuff, you know, somewhat cautious about. We hit on each of those items. Where we left it was kind of the timing in which we wanted to pass certain chapters, or pass it all. We learned that chapter 17 would need to be brought back as a formal zoning update. And so that could be, could that be, could that be our regular meeting?
Good. So, we do not need to have a separate zoning commission meeting to change language in the ordinance? We just need to give at least 15 days notice of a covered hearing that our zone ordinance will be added to.
Okay.
We have that omni-guna for the next break.
Yes, since we can get the posting, the notices, and then, once it's all published and noticed, then we can vote on it at the regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Will we actually have a meeting, is that intended?
No.
Well, I do make that motion. No, we approve it, subject to possible changes later on.
So, which chapters? So, we have, what we were doing earlier were five, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11.
That we discussed tonight.
Do you want to approve all?
Yes.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve chapters five, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11 of the ODC. Is there a second?
I say. Is there, I'd like to do that, but it's subject to the discussed changes, so that's like, so it's not just a blank document with blanks that we prove it's subject to the additions made during the workshop?
So, we'll take our ending motion if you'd like to.
You got a motion, Ben?
Alright, mayors, I may. I didn't realize in transit that I received an email from Ida with a very detailed breakdown on parts improvements. And so, I'm looking at it right now, so, so I know we talked about 150, her breakdown, and I just, I just emailed it to you.
Alright, so, there's the ending motion to approve chapters five, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11, subject to the changes we discussed earlier today. Is there a second to take that ending motion?
I say.
Second, ending motion's been seconded. Ending motion is updated. Now, let's open this, is there any further discussion? Brandon, you had some points to bring up. Appears the third one's.
He did give us updates.
It's much higher than what we estimated, what I estimated, half a million dollars.
Yeah, it's got a 5% contingency in there, or 10% contingency, so 450. So, if you take the contingency off, it's 450.
It's quite a bit more than we estimated.
Yeah, that's, that's everything they, they looked at. They looked at everything that would go into, that's over there right now, if it were to be built today, that's all.
Well. Let me place that, vary your number up to 409.09. And then our per PDU's times 3 is 1227 at the top. 1104 in the middle. .54. That's the bottom. That is a very high number. That was a huge number. That takes this, all the scenarios we run, just went up threefold. So, somebody coming in with 1500 units, something, 675, and a fee, it takes it to 1.1. That goes along with, and stuff that would scare people off.
So, that's just if they don't want to build a park.
Right.
So, I, I would tell you, in my experience, these master plan communities, they're gonna want to build their own park.
Yeah, but that kind of number, nobody's gonna wanna make a fee. I think I like the idea of getting the fees who can build a park. This is not just their development, but our whole city. So, like those developments on the ETJ or somewhere else, if they wanted to pay us a fee to improve our park, you know, I like having that on the table. I like, I thought the 150, but that's a totally, we gotta work.
Well, 150 is just material, like what are the installations and building it? That's just the items.
You sent it back?
Yeah, I just brought it to you. Because this includes the construction costs.
There should be dates on this. Is this, wait, but this isn't our actual cost?
No, this is their engineer's estimates.
I think we continue with the motion as discussed, if we want to bring it back next time in light of this new estimate, we can, we can always amend it. But we spent a lot of time going through these numbers, I think these numbers made sense, like we discussed. We're already approving all of the chapters. If we want to bring this back up and look at these numbers a little further, we can do that, but.
Well, the second one was stated, subject to change.
Right, subject to change anyway.
Yeah, subject to change, that, that was a motion.
Yeah, so we can bring it back.
Yeah, so we can bring it back, what we discussed earlier today was the 136. That's what we discussed earlier today, if we want to bring it back next time, we can reevaluate it if the, I don't wanna jump into something, we spent a lot of time working on it earlier, I'm thinking it through. If we want to bring it back next month to reevaluate this number, we can.
Let's do that.
Alright, well, the motion on the table stands to approve chapters five, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11, subject to the edits that we discussed earlier in the workshop. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Better have any questions, any motions? Okay. Number four, discuss, consider, and take possible action on city engineering updates and proposals regarding city projects in all matters related there to.
Is there one here?
Alright. Do we have any other updates or anything else?
I have the street maintenance plan we came up with.
Yeah, or, uh.
Yeah, no.
So, I guess just where we left it, she had put together kind of a schedule of work that she was gonna do to address the water study in light of some of her current conflicts. I believe she's already engaged in the community area, that's probably an aspect of that.
Because she, I don't know, she just got asked her's all.
I really want to push that as much as you can, so that we have the figures to go sit down with that as those thoughts and have those conversations.
There's a couple of others on there, and, uh, we need to get her to come.
She's at, she's at a conference in New Orleans, as much as we're hearing.
No, the second one.
But she hasn't been here in four, five months, whatever it is. She needs to tell us what we stand on as road makers.
She's ready to start.
She needs to be here.
That's my Jada, I don't want to night, I thought she would be here.
I thought she'd be here for anything.
But I'm gonna see her. See her, right. I took care of her, wait for her.
Alright. And if she needs us to call a special meeting, this is very important. If she can't make it in the future, prior to, if she can't make a regular meeting, that's a special meeting, which I, we can be unavailable for her. These are too important to keep pushing them, I'm not gonna.
I agree.
Number five, discuss, consider, and take possible action to approve proposed amendments to the city organization's charter and employee policy manual. I have the brief ones, we didn't get these until, you know, an hour or so.
Well, it's the same as it was.
So, that's my question, what's the difference?
It pulls the police department under the city directly.
That's the only difference?
Yes.
Same with the policies?
Yes.
So, there's no change to policies, is this question?
Well, there are policies that change, but it's to quit HR, please HR, under the city, hiring, people work hiring, people work, uh, to be notified of this part of the area actions. The police department under there, too.
Is there one portion that changes, makes that change, or is it updated in every item?
It's not updated in every item, it's just, um.
I was just familiar with the original one.
So, the original one had the police department, um, completely under the chief's, and this one moved it under myself. Under the chief, but under myself, for final review.
Like a, or oversight purposes.
Yeah.
They're still our separate entity.
There's still, it doesn't, I mean, it's all law enforcement, it's all the HR hiring, firing.
It's kind of like when they come to the city to apply, what do they apply for? Janitor, streets officer, so they would come fill out a city application, as opposed to coming fill out a police application first. They fill out a city application, pick the job they're applying for, they would be vetted to the city manager, and then, it would be shutted over to the police department, and then, we would do the police hiring. And then, for anything that's disciplinary, or anything, any complaints, they would be overseen, oversight through city manager.
We already talked about this, changes.
We've all agreed.
Yeah, yeah, we've kind of agreed, and that's how it should have been.
That's how most cities are.
Yeah, and then, when, when someone leaves a department, they will let us know, but the, the final letting go, or the final separation will be through the city, just like it should be. It's like final paperwork, you know, final paychecks, or whatever, just, you know, whatever, it would go in steps in reverse. So, the city would always have a knowledge of what's going on, so the police department wouldn't be the end all be all, which is how it should be.
Okay.
I hope that helps sort later communication and cooperation between the police department and the rest of the city.
Yeah, it doesn't, the chief is like ultimate authority for all matters law enforcement, but all matters other than law enforcement should be under the city.
So, this is the HR-related policies? Hiring, firing, the police department still has its own authority.
Well, they still pick their people, the hiring process is the city process.
Yeah. Subcity employees?
They are city employees.
Yeah, they're city employees, so.
I'm making a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the city organization's charter and the employee policy manual.
Our motion's been made to approve the proposed amendments to the city's organizational charter and employee policy manual. Is there a second?
I say.
Item is in second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding juvenile court program in all matters related there to.
Um, no action on this one, let's bring it back next week, I just wanted to put it on here so we don't forget it next week.
We have it by January 25th, it's a state department?
It's just a policy.
It's, it's, it's nothing that we are not already doing from a practical standpoint, but it deals with infractions incurred by minors. And as, it is a way that the state wants to try to decrease the amount of recorded violations on the record of the minor coming out of high school, going into adulthood. So, it's giving them more opportunities to get things off their records, so they don't stay up and provide for something stupid they did before they were 18. And most of the time, the way we handle juveniles anyway is to give them a lot of room and see, to give them opportunities to get these sub infractions off their records. So, it's not going to functionally change anything, but we have to have a new policy on books as by our state.
And also, just, just, so everybody knows, there are no more juvenile curtsies in the state of Texas.
Okay. Right back. Number seven, discuss, consider, and take possible action to get new city debit card from Texas Community Bank, man?
I'll imagine in Texas.
So, does the dollars expire?
Um, no, we had to cancel that last year when we had a former employee leave, and we didn't get it back. So, it's been canceled since like last October. But, um, like the training that I went to, I had to ask, I had to get a reimbursement, because I had to pay 800 dollars for the class, I had to be reimbursed for it, it's just easier just to pay.
Even the, even the police department, we, we have things that have to be paid for with a credit card, and either the chief or myself would pay for it annually, and to have to get reimbursement. Like Microsoft, that's a thing right now, the Microsoft account on all the computers for Word, which we need, the former chief paid for all that, so that's all gone. So, we won't be able to pay for it, because it's a monthly service fee, it's, it's like 10 dollars a month for four computers, but we need it, and we don't have a way to pay for it now.
I think we already had this one.
Yeah, we did, we, we just, it's your card, and I can't get it. That's why.
So, it's, it's those things like that.
Yeah.
I like the, what name would you call it?
Well, it's, it's, it was his card, we all signed a letter to allow him to get a debit card, and then.
Yeah, they just haven't had it.
Yeah, we just haven't had it.
Yeah, and there, and there's been time for it, for them. Cash has been spent to get some things, and that's no good. We don't want to get it, go through that again.
But you keep the card?
No, I keep the card, and, yeah, we have a, so we have a log now, when it gets checked out, and it gets checked back.
So, who took it? We don't need to get into who, but that card should have been.
He went to purchase an item to fix something here.
Phone sales, or we can create accounts.
What was the special item? I mean, it happened.
Well, you don't think that action's already been involved?
No, I just think you didn't know.
Yeah, motion, we get a new city debit card from the Texas Community Bank.
Alright, motion has been made to get a new city debit card from Texas Community Bank.
I say.
Item is in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm trying to do that tomorrow. Alright, number eight, discuss, consider, and take possible action with designated paper record for fiscal year 2025.
Um, I, I put the price list in here for you guys. From Divine, Crescenton, and the San Antonio Express News.
I don't know if anybody leaves this public.
Yes, no, I, I think we should use Divine, and then, if we have something big, put it in the express, but the express news has very long requirements of limits, so.
Even more expensive.
They're, well, for a classified, they're not so expensive, but if we have to put like a significant amount in there, it's very expensive. So, I don't know, I know, you had mentioned using the Divine paper.
I get the one.
Yeah. I think that's probably, I think that's probably our, our paper most.
It's closer.
It's closer.
Yeah.
So, what's this, the fees, 1449, San Antonio Express News, plus the affidavit three, is that for an?
Yeah, but that's for like, what, 250, or, that's for like a, a classified, yeah.
Then how do they compare those ones from six, for an eight page?
Yeah, the, the San Antonio Express News is much more expensive for those notices.
What was the last one, I think like 1,200 dollars for.
For a week, yeah.
I know we had it written about this.
Yeah, the, the Divine was in there as well.
Is that a question on the survey? What newspaper you did?
It's not, I can't.
What newspaper you most likely to proceed?
Let's do that.
Talking about what goes to today's decision.
Well, it's supposed to be our like most common newspaper, I don't think that's, it's any more sacred, so.
Does this compare to public?
The rule just requires a newspaper of general circulation within our city boundaries, so.
Yeah, and the Divine is cheaper than the public.
And you think they could put a box out here?
I can ask her.
For the people who want to get this.
I can, I can ask them. I mean, if they have to ask, we'd have to sit in the mall.
I'm making a motion, then we just made the Divine, there's our paper of record for 2025.
Our motion is made to designate Divine News as our paper of record for fiscal year 2025, is there a second?
I say.
Item is in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number nine, discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding the street maintenance program.
Well, one, I mean, the engineer not here, that one, I never said one.
Well, I, this is, this is the street maintenance program.
I have, for this stuff. And that's why we talk to.
We're gonna take the very last one.
Well, we want to know about that case, right? The maintenance, we have it here.
We'll bring it back, I'm just curious, look at it, I'm just.
We can have it back.
Yeah, hopefully, it should be, or a special meeting. If she can't make the regular meeting, let's have a special meeting. I just don't know if it happens, we have certain recommendations.
I think the priority one would select one of the people that has first prepares.
Yeah.
Let me consider that. At the, in the key here, at the top right, where can you plug? Just confusing because the bridge also uses the same pit road, but we don't do red, that's a offside.
Oh, I see, it's just depicting the bridge. There's no numbers associated with it. I guess the next step would be for us to, because I agree with your priority, we need to come up with.
Yeah, because it's Tennessee law, where Bonnaroo Road, portal roads, horse to school, horse back. Not all of them need to be completely reconstructed, reconstructed, some of them just need sections dug up and fixed, and to be chipping through.
On mine, there's a creek missing that crosses.
Alright, we'll bring this back.
And did she give us a cost system or anything?
No. I mean, I just drew some of the part where it was like that, uh, I wish I had the name of something, that road by the railroad.
Is that right?
No, the one that goes on this side, um.
Right lane?
No, this one, and she's showing right here. That one.
Is that her name, this?
The one that's on this side of the railroad.
The diagonal one?
Yeah.
The one if you get off the highway at Shell, and take a, like a, you say, and you turn back to the right.
Yeah, turn back.
There's a couple of roads over there.
Okay, Tom.
So, I guess it's on this side of the road, obviously, and the other one, the other one, I guess, the part you got. My question, what other side of the road?
I don't know.
I was thinking on the other side of, I started, I mean, on the other side of the railroad.
I think that is true.
That's part of it, yeah. Or go over there. Miles 110. Discuss, consider, and take possible action regarding the city news.
Okay, on the newspaper, I gotta say that, uh, I think when, when it comes out.
We're gonna do a quarter, then we're gonna mail it out.
She told me she's gonna do it, and that's good, but I, I think, I think it should be mailed, and I think we talked about that. But I, I think it, I think it should be mailed and I think we talked about that. Because a, a lot of people always ask me, ask to me some things and, and they tell me newsletter, but they're not giving. And because they always saw me for that.
It's a month of this every night.
So that was a concern of the cost.
Yeah, the cost.
We can afford it now.
So if we report it, then we can mail it out.
We can afford it now. So I think everybody should get one. Or everybody was gonna mail it.
Well, there's a newsletter and you also put everything on the internet.
We do.
And email blast, it also be directed, Gary Pugh, somehow. It would sound out.
Yeah.
That'd be pretty direct. Hey, you can get out of this. I like mailing this.
Really? What's the cost of that?
I don't know. Talk to my head.
You have five hundred dollars budgeted.
Yeah, it's about more than that.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be more than that.
Like mail chip?
Sure.
Same.
Like mail chip? Are you talking about mailing mass mail, I mean, mass ballots?
We have five hundred and fifty houses or so.
Um, well, I was looking at the stamps dot com where you can order the, um.
Yeah.
It, it's cheaper to mail it out that way.
About fifty?
It's cheaper than that.
The test machine does, you do your own stamps.
Yeah.
And I'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what are we doing? How many newsletter? When, so what I would like to know, I want the days on the calendar is to win the point back.
Okay.
That would help me because it's so you can email, hey, what do you got?
Okay.
Dog, I got twenty-four hours.
Well, y'all send me something and we'll send it out.
When's the cost coming?
We'll, it's when you, y'all get me stuff, we'll send it out next week.
And then moving forward, let's get all the days, we know when it's going in and out. Next meeting, we'll look at the cost estimates so we can make a better. For the next meeting, we'll look at the budget amendment. Um, if we can make some money. But for now, it's going quarterly. Do they make sense?
Yeah, probably. That'd be good. Can I just make a motion that we do number eleven S printed, I mean, number ten, I'm sorry. On the newsletter.
So that we're gonna do the newsletter monthly.
Quarterly.
I'm sorry, quarterly, you're right. So your motion is we're gonna do our newsletter quarterly and mail it to the.
And mail it to the citizens, yeah.
All right, motion was made, uh, to just conduct our quarterly newsletter quarterly and mail to all residences. Item is in second.
I see.
Item is in second. If there's any further discussion. All those in favor?
I'm.
Money, too.
Yeah, well, so we're gonna, we can go ahead and start it. We have it for one month. In December, we're gonna need to update it so that we have a full quarter. So we have our, um, item, the five thousand dollar deal.
It's a different check.
Yeah, and that opens up more of the funding for these. All right, number eleven. Discuss, consider it a possible action regarding street signs. Commissioner, what's this?
Yeah, I believe we do have a sign, right?
We are changing them out, yes. I don't have them yet.
I haven't seen them yet.
You want them green and white. Like a city sign.
They're gonna be green and white, yes.
Yes.
Like all the other small towns, they have green and white signs.
Yeah.
And they're reflected on.
And you can see them.
But we worked on that. It was came out before.
So we're, we're installing it?
I don't have them yet.
Oh, you don't have them yet?
Those ones sitting in the.
Those are old. Those are old, yeah.
Okay, so the answer is we're working on it.
Yes.
That's, that's good enough for me.
We got a, we got a list of street signs to the, to the shop.
Okay, well, I don't mean emotional manner.
Nope. All right, number twelve, discuss, consider it a possible action regarding stop signs at intersection of Benson City Road and Barmore Road and the intersection of Interstate thirty-five access and Benson City Road.
Okay, then, uh, value explaining on, uh, what the rules are. But that one stop sign over here on the Barmore Road and, uh, Benson City Road. Uh, if, if you, when you come to it, the sign's here, but the turn is up here. So you have to come stop at the stop sign and you can't see it yet, so you have to move up. And then there's a light coming. Same thing on thirty-five and Benson City Road. That house on the corner there, the sign is way back. It's the same thing. You stop there, you can't see. You need, you need to move up, so you have to move up.
So, well, so we, we called Tech Lot and asked them to replace the white strip because it's worn off. There's like a little piece of it there, but the warning strip is not there. And then we are going to put on Benson City Road and Barmore Road, we're gonna put a white strip too, so.
Okay. So if you don't pass white strip, you pass stop sign.
Yeah.
That's okay. That's on hold or appended?
No, we're gonna do it.
Do it.
Well, Tech Stop's already been contacted. I just have to order, there's like a big strip that you put down and you mail it. So we just have to order it.
Okay.
So you don't have a motion for that?
Yeah, we're gonna pay the mortgage last and we get done.
Now, I can't tell you Tech Stop's gonna do it on the access or Benson City Road. I don't know.
Well, we can keep bugging them. We can keep bugging them.
Yeah.
It's dangerous.
We're gonna keep bugging, keep bugging on that maintenance piece. The grass grown up, can't see it.
Yeah.
It's constant with the, constant.
Yes.
Pages. All right. All right, number thirteen, discuss, consider it a possible action to change city initiatives titles of city manager. Commissioner, who's them?
Well, actually, is, I can't get quite off. Check on this, this and that. There is a lot of work and I, I don't think what he does is city administrator. I think he's doing more work, but I think it should be city admin. So that way you should control more area than just.
I don't know if there's a difference, though.
There's, there's not. If we want, if, if you're worried about just the, the title of it, and that would require us changing the type of city we don't. Uh, but effectively, city managers and city administrators are the same role.
Same role.
It's just a different time.
Yeah, it's the same.
I just. I just live there.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you.
Yeah, but it's just the type of government. I think the change in awards vote. And the way we have it written, like the way we turn around and put the ordinance, I'm not sure what the difference is. You know, with, for.
The only difference is the budget. We, city management's the budget officer, no difference.
And city administrators, no.
Yeah, still.
Okay.
All right, number fourteen, discuss, consider it a possible action regarding employee retention stipend on matters related to. Commissioner.
I know that we did give them a few ways a year ago, correct? Uh, but I think it is this, uh, Christmas, Christmas bonus, a one-time, whatever amount of money we. That does. Every employee, anybody that doesn't know that, they do much, maybe a church. So. It's on that. You go ahead, sir. Many, as the other nobody are not allowed to give notices. Uh, but we are allowed to reward longevity and so that's why I have it phrased here as a retention stipend. Uh, that is a way to reward a one-time, you know, one-off situation, um, for those employees who continue their employment if they are at will. If they are contracted employees, then we need to amend their contract, um, to change their face scale or anything. Uh, as far as turkeys, that I don't think the city should be giving the business a good amount of turkeys. Um, but if y'all wanna do that on the side and y'all wanna do that through a nonprofit, that would be welcome to. Um, but that is, that is not for the city to.
I just thought we'd, the video next to the. We'll get him a character to come up.
Of y'all as, as individual, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Cruz, mom, we're trying to do.
Wild turkey.
I got a goat.
No, I meant wild, wild turkey.
Yeah, I got a goat.
Wild turkey.
The alcohol.
The alcohol.
Whatever you said.
Yeah, wild turkey.
I already wanted the one. I was gonna wild.
Yeah. Yes, it's a good.
Okay, so what are we gonna do?
So the American nation will do the turkey.
Yeah, we're doing it.
Need the turkey out.
And we've got it, we've already got fifteen, but we don't wanna take it anywhere.
Okay.
So now we're gonna have to this one. So let us do it.
Is there any money for that or?
So that would be, yeah, that would be the question. There was a buzzer and then.
Okay, you can check the minute.
Yeah, something we can look at.
Just around the corner.
Yeah, so what are you thinking?
A fifty, two hundred dollars, so it's a little money. Make a man for at least a year.
Thanks for staying in Florida.
Huh?
Thank you for staying in Florida. Okay, that's something we can look at, um, and bring back for next meeting. Okay, number fifteen, discuss, consider it a possible action to surplus and sell public works tractor shredder and chipper in all matters related to.
Can I say, like, all three of y'all gave me this item, right? You just give it to me first, so.
Commissioner Martinez, first idea to me. I think we all kind of like, like the idea, I like the idea though, we use it for our, for facility.
Yes.
Mine is, I'm never seen used, you know.
But we use it, but.
Used. You know, if we really eat it, we have the mowers. You know, we rented the equipment that we needed, you know, from projects that I would have thought we were gonna use to tractor board. Well, so that's something the drag drivers are about to get, or anyone making that?
And you won't, like, like, we're bringing concrete over to the parts installed, the fitness equipment. You couldn't pick up concrete bags with it, like the forklift, you can't pick up a pallet with it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not big enough.
It's not a heavy-duty truck here.
It's a good tractor.
It cuts grass.
It, it's just, the cracker's about a small yard.
They use it to cut grass.
And the other thing, we're gonna have to get some stuff out of that room. If we're talking about a cracker, see, like Barmore Chicks or something like that, we're gonna need space. So you need to get this.
We should clean it up today, see?
Yeah, please start cleaning up today.
Yeah, I did.
Well, you don't wanna put your foot on out there in the weather, but. So we need to sell it.
We wanna get trademark value.
Period. We already know the values.
Yeah, well.
Do we have to auction it, though? It's, it's governor property. You don't have to auction it.
Y'all, I mean, we can host it.
We can put a reserve on it.
Yeah, put it on there, but if y'all.
Can we put the start on?
We can put a reserve on it.
Yeah, so. Then put it out, let's blast it out, let everybody knows.
Yeah.
Knows their Facebook. You get glory, you utilize it to make it like, but it put in the newsletter.
That's right.
In the future, you could recognize some of that.
Well, your own guy wants a chipper. But, you know, you can't tell him anything, so.
So we don't accept it or?
I would say accept each one, but tractor shredder, chipper, tractor food.
Yeah. So the way that we sold the, um, the trailer, the mobile command center, is we, we put it on online auction. We just put a reserve on it, so we got the minimum that we wanted for it.
Let's, let's put it out, cause most.
Yeah, we, we have a price you can get for those, I'll make.
For what is it?
You know, once, once eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
I don't have a lot of them.
For the tractor.
We're talking about the tractor, the tractor, the chipper. I'll keep asking.
I have to, I have to find out. I'll have to ask about the chipper and the.
Raise it, raise it up.
Cause I don't know. I have a phone looking at it, so he's supposed to.
Yeah, he, he got, he got figures.
Okay.
That's where I got the eighteen thousand from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion, we put them up for auction or sale or.
Whatever we need to do.
Huh?
Whatever we need to do, so.
I want to set a reserve on it.
Let me set a reserve at fair market value?
That's fair market value.
Yeah.
Do you like to revise your motion again?
Okay.
To, uh, is it correct that your, your motion is to, uh, surplus and sell the public works tractor shredder and chipper at fair market value?
Yeah, you said put a reserve on it.
With the reserve of fair market value.
We have the figures.
All right, so the motion's been made to the second.
Second.
Item is in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, sixteen, discuss, consider it a possible action, purchase of skids here and attachments out of street maintenance fund and all matters related to.
Okay, that's, uh, uh, street maintenance, correct? And, uh, I think, uh, Art can handle that, correct? Or do we have to engineer it?
So, so the engineers, um, for like our gravel streets and some of our other streets that are not like having catastrophic failures. Um, the engineer said that there are sections that we can just dig up and repair and then put asphalt back down and seal it. That we wouldn't need to go through this whole process on every street. Um, so that's something for y'all to consider. We could do that or we could consider to, we could continue to rent them.
Or, or need to get all the streets done, period. Two thousand and nine or ten was the last time that maintenance was done to these streets.
Yes.
Get all this other stuff, let's get them done. Get the, get the, uh, I got over here and, and those, you, you had over here to work on this.
Some of it, we don't have to have engineered. We can just do it.
We didn't have an engineer wanna get it last time.
Yeah.
Just did it.
Well, there's so much to do. We need to have a plan.
But there's still some, couple of roads that need to be paved.
Yeah.
That's all.
Related to the skids here, so skids are very expensive. Are we talking you sit here?
We did get governor pricing on the buy board too, so we did.
We have a price, I, I, I did go to, I don't have a price.
I think they're very expensive. Where, where have we been renting it from?
Um.
Is that from, uh?
ASU.
Cause we rented it for over here. I would agree. See, see if there'd be a lot of maneuver.
It was nice, it was nice and white.
It's ASU, um, it's like twenty-nine hundred dollars for a month. But the thing with renting it is, like, on the weekends, like, we're wasting days if we're paying for it.
Uh, question, if we use the street maintenance funds, though, is that appropriate?
It's for street maintenance.
Or if we use for street, whether we use it for somebody else, we gotta, but couldn't get attachments?
No, we need to do the street maintenance fund alone.
We could get attachments if those attachments are directly related to repairing the street.
What's like rollers, the hammer to break the asphalt? It's for street maintenance.
Uh, I think these are very expensive. I would say we're four thousand in the account.
And you're taking me a maintenance employee to go do that. I know, I know we can do it, but why don't we get it all done at one time?
Well, yeah, well, should've sent a monthly res, about twenty-nine hundred a month.
Yeah.
That's my favorite.
It isn't bad.
Three days, five days a week.
But if we rented it for a month, then we have a plan, nursery plan, better than eighty-five.
We've already got the price on materials so that we can go to the gravel streets and we can put down buildings and seal them. Um, very good deal on materials.
I'm looking at brand new Bobcats right now, they don't start with less than fifty percent.
Yeah, I don't, that's my.
It's a Bobcat.
I like renting.
You're not gonna do it.
You can rent it, that's fine.
You're gonna start doing that. You're not gonna do it in a month. So it's gonna be another, about another, the next one.
Yeah.
It's gonna go on and on and on. Why don't we like to talk to Ida and.
Tell her we have a plan.
Give us a date.
We got a plan.
I'm talking about the birthday I do not.
Probably the one show. We, we bring up, we, we talk about it, engineer for the show.
I mean, if we, we've already authorized a certain amount to do work, and if three thousand a month, if you wanna come with a plan and say, all right, we're gonna do this stretch of roads, it's gonna cost this much. We've been budgeting, we've been money for it for two years. Let's, I'm agreeing, let's start executing, we need a plan.
It's expensive to pay the streets.
Right, well, we, there's little things we can do right now, in the process, there's some little things we can do, all about doing, but I don't think committing to a fifty thousand dollar a foot right now.
We don't.
But I like, if you're renting, I like your, to come up with a plan, execute the plan, we need to be doing that one line at a time.
So y'all wanna take on making a plan outside of major repairs? Y'all wanna?
What might not, the major repair they're gonna cost, to see if we have enough money?
Yes, we did.
I think the major repairs is a very long, much longer term, kind of planning, but if you wanted to bring, uh, some other new suggestions, it's.
We did just get, we got the safe streets grant that we applied for, for one hundred and twenty million dollars, so we, we just got that credit.
What?
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, but it was, it was patching it.
When I was in class last week.
Oh. Patching the streets, that's what you're doing.
No, 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 not, that's not what the, the safe street spread, yeah, we got it.
Awesome, that's very good.
Yeah. Um.
We still need to get the streets done. This, this street right here. This, this main drag here to the city hall in Washington, and that's just one of them. It, it's, they need to be done, but when a new city, we better. Our citizens don't want it fixed, it's not the, I don't want it fixed, but I've had several and asked me, what do you got to the streets? We're working on it, they're tired of hearing that answer.
I will, I will use them probably twice a month. We've got residents that need some major.
Well, we're talking about skids here, uh, and attachment for street maintenance, I think it's.
You'd rather us rent it?
I like renting and starting, and I think that's what I'm.
And then the contractor's come along, says, he's gonna say, who made that there, and now we're gonna have to go over there, see? I can see it if it's a major hole, like we used to have over there on that city road in front of me, no problem. But we can't go around fixing all these little potholes.
This game?
Yeah, but listen to me again, are we gonna, it's expensive. It costs thousands of dollars to do it back in two thousand and ten, you can imagine what it costs now, are we gonna have enough money? We don't know.
We can prioritize, I think, what you're, I'm not sure what you're saying, is redoing all the roads at once, which we have a plan that we can chip away at.
No, we do, like, just like you did last time, do them all at once, because then they're not gonna get done.
How do they get the money off them?
We don't, we don't know how much it's gonna cost.
Right, so we gotta have a plan first.
To do them all at one time.
Start with priorities as far as budget's gonna lie.
Yeah. See, and if we keep packing away at that budget, then we're gonna have no money.
Well, we, so, I mean, bag of, uh, old mix, really isn't much what we did right there at the city road and bottom, we can do a repair, we can, we can do those repairs. We can do that now.
All these doors are in mad shape, you know?
That's our kinda plan, we all agree there. Mr. Farber, is there anything you have something to say?
Yeah, you better off, isn't it, you gotta get the brick dealt, they repair, you hang out and do it, and all, we're gonna do it. By that way, you don't get any money out of your pocket to repair, where the city ain't got money, give one this and this.
That's why I like our.
You said we had that.
We do have that.
Do that.
And we have a seventy-five budget, so let's start using it, but I think the better use is, is spending it on the roads with the big, the people.
We gotta do something for the citizens, we can't just be nickel and dime.
I don't know, we have to add some money off.
The street needs to be done, uh, that's how you know it needs to be done. And ours is in terrible shape, right, late, so, come on.
It was a, the plan is for, we're gonna have a plan. Kinda like, we hit on number sixteen, this was seventeen, discuss considering take possible action regarding additional solar lights in the city park, Mr. Union.
Okay. You seventeen, what's your, uh? I think, uh, we get solar lights, we, and they, they should, they should be going high in each corner, or whatever we report, and put them on telephone poles?
Yes.
Maybe twelve, fifteen feet high.
So I like, I like that, that they're higher, can't be shot with a pistol, that are vast, that's the key.
They still shoot them.
Yeah.
And you can shoot trees, and it's free energy, free energy, I mean, I really like those lights we got for the festival, they were so bright. I love that bright, because anyway, we get two or three of those, I would love it, but I think you can get cheap solar lights, you can put them high, but where they get some, some of them can go in trees, I don't know specifically.
Yeah, I know, which we.
You know, um, like, these standing ones, anybody can touch them, I mean, they're nice, they look nice.
They're getting broken.
They're getting broken, they're expensive, that whole thing, versus we have a tall four by four, and we're kinda hanging out like this. Those are two bucks, you know, I agree.
The kids can actually reach it.
Yeah. And more so that.
But that's what we have for now.
Cause, I mean, the lights are probably expensive, the telephone poles probably cheaper, maybe, all across them, but in a couple of months, forty dollars, and then we're like, uh, seventeen feet. But I don't know what that could be.
Well, we have a capital improvement fund budgeted. Um, but, like, building improvements, we have our inbound yard, actually, we have a fortress there, we, we don't have anything to direct park improvements, it's the first time this was here, this was for the grant. We do have building improvements. Read it over here.
Electrical.
Clear the light.
No. Hmm, electrical, something that has to do with electricity.
We do have electric, we have eleven dollars, but that's for utilities.
Cause if you go electric, you get installed transformers, and all that, so we don't need that.
That's. There, we have like much, we have juice in there.
Building improvements?
Yes, we have building improvements, we have thirty thousand there, and I think that was more just. Plug in case.
Yeah, we just do it.
We can start with, throw a board and then see how it works.
Do you have an idea, you talked about the pole lights, you wanna offer a certain amount, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, we, we need a price.
We need a price, like, maybe we could wrap the city administrator, come up with a price that we can approve, at this next meeting.
And I don't know, and our maintenance man could, could do those tall poles, so, but we could get somebody to do it.
Depending on how tall, yeah.
But you're gonna have to rock them in the hole.
Now, you have an order, can we have that?
We have an order on the tractor.
Yeah, you gotta go, go so far down, so it won't, so the wind won't catch it.
Yeah.
He installed his, because the lights are as tall as he is.
Well, those will be mounted on the concrete, though.
There's some, I mean, I've been shooting, I've done that before, you've gotta make sure that someone actually did it.
We have a guy in America, he's a physician, Ramon, we could get him to give us some ideas.
Oh, CPS's powers, you talking about CPS's?
I told me no, did I tell you?
They told me yes.
They told me no.
They, they hate that they flash in here.
I remember them asking about us putting up solar streetlights, and they said we could, we put up our own pole. We could, as long as we don't touch that pole, we can do it.
This is LED, LED lights.
Yeah, those are LED, they're good.
Yeah.
Now, could we have four, couple three telephone poles? You know, we need to find out.
Come up with some options, and let's go to some options, and let's, but I think five, five, six, so, like, to go all the way on the perimeter, so they can, I think, so they can't be shot.
Cause they, they, they just kinda shine through the side, they're not shining down.
Some of them pretty bright.
Yeah.
I sent you the links of mine, the ones like that, they're not, I mean, I wish they were brighter, I would say get the better ones, and like, that, that can be, they're pretty cheap.
One's a good deal.
Yeah. And it might be black Friday, so.
That might be, yeah.
And if it's within the, you know, sometime, we can do it. Okay, anything else on that, we all agree?
We agree.
We, we, we weigh on, uh.
Pricing.
Prices, estimate.
Yep, I know, it's good, then. And then hopefully we come up with a price, come up with an action plan, a little price, so we can get it done while it's getting charged, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be about it. And if it needs to be a special meeting. All right, eighteen, discuss considering take possible action regarding health insurance, or some of the points, I'm not sure, but there too, something that came up, we've been talking about, but we're still getting details.
So. I, I have what we budgeted for, I can go with, um. And so, we ended up getting quotes from a couple different places, uh, Texas Health, the T M L, never got back to this. All state was very expensive.
So T M L, we voted in place on T M L?
We did, um, and we ended up. No, I don't know.
There was a problem?
Well, we, we ended up, um, talking to, uh, Lloyd, E, Ed, one?
I deal.
I, um, yes.
They, they were here for the, uh, concrete.
Yeah, they were, they were, they sell, um, insurance through the marketplace, and so they're actually the cheapest place that we found. Um. And so then, it's not like one plan that everybody has, everybody picks from individual.
Marketplace.
Marketplace. Um, and then anything that goes over the three hundred dollar threshold, we enjoy, we have to pay as it.
Is that, can we, some regions? You see marketplace?
No, um, apparently, just the district's a going to marketplace, going from, through bigger insurances, just because it's more affordable.
So are we paying, or are we just giving them?
So they're paying for a certain level of care, up to including three hundred dollars, so we budgeted that it's, all the employees' basic insurance coverage. If they want to change their plan to increase the policy, or make it a better fit for them, and that ends up costing more, that's on the employee, that's his decision if he wants to increase the benefit.
What I requested is that I could, that I would be able to pay the three hundred dollar a month payment directly, and not just give it to the employee. Um, and then anything over the math, and they're liable, either on pocket.
What's the reason?
So we know it's being spent on health insurance, and they're not just pocketing an extra three hundred dollars.
I got built for the whole thing already.
You got what?
I got, yeah, it was nice, it was a good program, I like it, I have a thing, like, they set up, they send me all the, the sign up and everything, it was good.
You have to, it's not, they have to redo it, it's not.
Yeah, but they have good options, it was, it was a good deal.
For the three hundred dollars?
It's, it's good for everyone except for me.
Yeah, or me.
Um, because I don't have.
What do you mean?
Well, for me, there's not a three hundred dollar option, so.
Me neither.
So then in that case, somebody doesn't call for a three hundred dollar option, and she's like, three hundred, worst opinion to marketplace? Like, where's the difference, are we going to them on paycheck?
No, no, we're only paying the three hundred.
Then, does marketplace billing us and them? What's the difference?
Who's?
And they get to choose their policy, and then we're coming out of it. Well, that's a lot easier, is there a commitment to this?
Is there a commitment to it?
Like, on the city side, like, I, because.
Like, if they're no longer employed here?
No, like, when we're looking at the T M L policy, it's, well, we kinda got, you know, with T M L insurance, or retirement.
It's not about T M R S, that's why stand to your best.
That's T M R S, right, but what we're looking at originally, approving the three hundred dollars per, since you know, and so, like, and I've looked at other health insurance plans, where we're committed to a certain level of service, to a certain level of people, is this?
No, 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 this is just individual, yes.
So we have no commitment.
Correct, the city's in our place.
Or obligation.
So they don't have to take decisions.
And it's not a lot.
So they have to read the three hundred dollars.
It's not something that you say, if you wanna work here, you have to take decisions, you know, they don't have to do that.
Can they opt out, is that what you're asking?
No.
No, right?
They can't, they can't opt out.
And they can decide they don't want.
Well, yeah, you can't.
Get that benefit from the city, but.
So then, I need to have.
Then they all, then it's just three hundred dollars. Yeah.
Can you give me a form then, for them to opt out?
Is there a question, do you want them or not?
I mean, that's up to y'all to decide what they all like, give them, and that.
Now, what I did find out is that they will cover part-time employees, and then the reserves can also get health insurance through them. No, no, I'm just saying.
Anybody can get part-time.
Yeah, so, that's not like common knowledge among people.
But we'll be paying for the serps, but they.
No, 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 but, like, it's just good information that we've been able to pass on to them, that they can get health insurance.
It's not like this is just gonna rate for being without, it's anybody can do it, right?
Yes.
I like to have an opt-in, opt-out flexibility, like, of course, you pay seven hundred dollars a month to people, you know, cause in some cases, you can't get it, three hundred. It's a benefit that y'all, we voted to have, I mean, when I change them to, you know.
Health insurance expense.
Well, the marketplace, that's a good deal, the marketplace.
What's, what's the message?
It depends on person, it's their own policy, right?
It's their own policy.
I can't.
My son pays eight hundred dollars a month.
That makes a difference. Okay, do you need a motion for that, for the opt-in, opt-outs? I was just curious where we were.
That's good, then. Well, I mean, so then, it's basically, it's amounting to a, a raise with the option to now provide healthcare.
We've already had that.
Right, and so we've approved the benefit, but now in the situation, we're offering an opportunity for them to take a cash option opposed to the benefit.
Well, no, we're, you can opt-in, opt-out, and if you opt out, you still get the benefits.
Okay.
And then that's just more. Or you can opt-in, get the due benefit, they have to cover, they have over four hundred in the plan, and if that's an appropriate number, the three hundred, you know, which you notice. Give me some.
How, how much does the city have to pay?
We pay three hundred a person, is what we budgeted.
Okay.
So then, what does that, what does that then come? So, so.
It's individual, it's individual to each person, like, they go, they pick their own plan.
Oh, okay.
And sometimes it might be more.
So it's what they, it's what the individual person selects.
But the, the stuff depending on the person there, it's just sort of the basic, it might be more than the three hundred.
Eighty, twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, so then, that's, we don't need a motion for that, cause that's, we already just approved that benefit.
But I like the opt-in, opt-out function, and that's in the old policy, right? It's more of a, you know, I'm just like, that's not a two R.
If they don't want it, but if they don't.
That was a whole.
Like, like Marina's, her model.
That's very true.
No, it's already done.
It's not, I mean, what we've been, everybody, we did one, I mean.
We, we met with the guy and, and picked our plans on Tuesday, so they're still doing all the paperwork and stuff.
Beginning of the year.
Supposed to be December first.
Okay, well, that's a double.
Okay, all right, we're gonna go to our executive session.
Yes.
Uh, the board of commissioners, was, is yours something? Yeah, okay, uh, sorry, the board of commissioners reserved the right to meet in executive session, first went to provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act, including both the teleportation section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero seven four of the executive session. So we're gonna discuss nineteen through twenty-two, I need to read them off. What do we do with this? Uh, nineteen, year-end performance review for city administrative boundary map, twenty, discussion to renew the city administrative contract, twenty-one, discussion of possible real estate opportunities, twenty-two, discussion with the internal chief of police. It is now seven forty, we're gonna go into the executive session. It is now seven forty, we're going to go into executive session. Could excuse us?
I'm gonna stretch.